Okay, it is Thursday, July 21st, 2022, 6:00 PM, and this is the Health and Safety Committee meeting.
I'd like to call Health and Safety Committee to order at 6:00 PM. Members present, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, myself, Acting Chair, Kevin Myers is absent today. Start off with any public participation. Seeing none, we'll move to approval of the July 7th minutes. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Wireball. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Moving on to the request by the Police Department to amend codified ordinance 133.07 subsection C under qualifications. Right now, it says that you have to live within Crawford County to be a part of the auxiliary police force, and they are asking that we remove that so they can get people from outside. And so I don't see an issue with it. I talked to Officer Walker today. He didn't see an issue with it, so we'll just open it up to anybody who wants to come in.
I think we just need to remove it.
Just remove it?
Of the, that they have to reside in Crawford County.
Right.
Right. Well, I mean, okay, here's the only thing. Do we want to make it a specific area? Do, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I asked him that, if he wanted to just do it to adjoining counties or just leave it open.
Or Ohio, or?
Just, you know, I don't know. I think we just don't even have it in there at all. It's just, as long as they abide by the 18 years of age and their good mental and physical health, I mean, they can still.
And it all, it has to go, I mean, in front of the chief or somebody to be an auxiliary. I mean, it's just like, somebody can't walk off the street.
No, they have to be vetted, and they have, they go through their background checks and all their good stuff there.
So there are checks and balances there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. I think we should, because I think there's two or three people that are waiting to come onto the auxiliary force right now, so we should probably just run this as an emergency just to get it through and done so we can get those people put on, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, because we may need those people.
I agree.
By August.
I agree. So, yeah, so we just need.
So, yeah, I'll make a motion to.
To amend it.
Amend it to just take the members of appointed shall be.
Residents of Ohio.
The members so appointed shall be.
Residents, yeah.
Under the age.
We can either choose a resident of Ohio or underage and just leave it be.
Yeah, yeah, we have to take out, like, what? Be residents of Crawford County. Take that out.
Yeah. Everything else should be fine.
Everything else should be fine. So I make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, seconded by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Open projects, I don't have anything.
That was an emergency motion.
As an emergency, yes, as an emergency. I'm sorry if I didn't clarify that.
Thank you. Public participation. Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 6:03 PM.
Okay, it is Thursday, July 21st, 2022, 6:05 PM, and this is the Finance Committee meeting.
I will call Finance to order at 6:05. Members present, Mark McKeever, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair, Kevin Myers is absent. First order is any public participation for the Finance Committee. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to requested minutes corrections from June 23rd, 2022, regular Finance Committee meeting. We've already approved these, right?
The 23rd have been already approved, yeah, but Ms. DeShawn had some corrections that she wanted.
So, I looked at those today, and you guys tell me what you want to do. I don't care. I looked at them today, and all I see is things that were added. The biggest thing I saw in any, the word "and" was changed to "any," and other than that, if someone wants the entire dialogue of the meeting, it's typically the, the recording can be found at the top of our minutes, so I don't see why we need to keep jumping around if it's not a big deal.
It's just Finance is the first part, yeah.
I understand that. I see nothing that's going to, in here, that's going to make any difference, other than, you know, just elaborating on a few things and this and that, and the minutes. Like I say, if they want the entire minutes, they can go to the audio recording. So with that, I'll just leave that up to everyone else, but that's my feeling on it. We either accept this or we move on. I hear no motion. We'll move on. We'll leave the original minutes as they were. All in favor of that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So then, we have the minutes for Thursday, July 7th, 2022, and those are pretty brief.
I made the motion where you said.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then we move on to creation of new funds and expense lines, okay? That would be Joyce. Oh, there she is. Thank you.
Okay, um, to start with, we need to create Fund 268, which is for the opioid settlement that we received, so we need to create the fund, the object level, which is General Administration, and.
Joyce, is your microphone?
No.
You're good, I got you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Fund 268 opioid settlement in Department 7780, General Administration, with an object line of 23 contractual services. This simply sets up the lines. We have to have a separate fund for this so that it's only spent on addiction services and recovery, and it has to be tracked for auditing purposes.
I'll make a motion to create the new fund.
Sir? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then appropriations. The first one, this is one that I had referred a while back and then pulled it because we didn't need it immediately, so I brought it back with this other group. This is in the General Fund, Program One, Security of Persons and Property. In the Police Department, we need to appropriate $2,095.36 to materials and supplies, and this addition is from donations to Fund Safety Town. Then in Fund 202, Safety Forces Levy, also in the Police Department, we need to appropriate $30,000 in materials and supplies, and this is needed for gas and oil. In Fund 250, Park and Recreation Land, this is in the Parks and Playgrounds Department, 7310, $13,000 to Object 21, Personal Services, and this is for the hospitalization line, the health insurance, because we have several employees from the Street Department that actually are split. Over the summer of six months, they also work in parks, so we split their salaries 50/50, and we didn't have that calculated last fall when we did the original budget. Then we have the new Fund 268 for the opioid settlement under General Administration. We've received $4,037.15 we need to appropriate to contractual services, and as I said before, this is to be used for addiction services and recovery. Then we come to solid waste. That's Department 7515, solid waste. We need to appropriate $15,000 in contractual services. This is needed for gas and oil. If our rate increase is not approved, we'll have to cut this amount to 7,000 because that's all I have. And that's it for appropriations.
I'll make a motion.
Wait, I just got one question. On the 50/50 split, that's, the other 50 wasn't in streets?
Yes, but the street fund is fine. It's not short in that line. It's just the parks that's short because I didn't account for that 50% out of the parks line when we did the budget in the fall. What we do is we charge streets from October 1st to, I believe, April 1st, and then they're paid out of Park and Recreation from April to.
But we didn't charge.
We didn't charge the park fund initially for this extra insurance.
Yeah, we only charged street.
We only charged streets, so there'll be excess in streets. Yeah.
Well, that's what, yeah, I, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to request emergency legislation for all the appropriations.
I'll second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Did we make the creation an emergency too?
I said.
You did say that for the creation? Okay. I'm sorry, I missed it.
No.
No.
I made a motion, but I'll amend my motion to make that an emergency also.
I'll second that.
Okay. Yeah, we have to have some place to put that money, yeah.
We got to vote again.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
All right. Okay, now, transfers.
I'll do transfers.
Within the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund, under Department 7610, Street Construction Maintenance and Repair, we need to increase the materials and supplies line by $50,000 and decrease the capital outlay line by $50,000. This transfer, so that you understand where it's coming from, we had appropriated money in the new vehicles line. We can't get these new vehicles because of not having chips, they can't be produced, and we need extra money in these other lines. So we're transferring this 50,000 from new vehicles, and it'll go to gas and oil, $33,000, equipment maintenance, $10,000, and stone gravel and concrete of $7,000. Then in sewage disposal, in sewers and drains, we need to add $22,050 in materials and supplies from the capital outlay line, and this transfer is also from new vehicles to gas and oil, $11,500, equipment maintenance, $5,0275, and stone gravel and concrete, $5,0275. Then in stormwater utility, in the stormwater utility department, we need to transfer $22,050 to materials and supplies from the capital outlay line. Again, this is from new vehicles to equipment maintenance, $11,025, and operating incidentals, $11,025, and that's all I have for transfers.
You, I don't know, anyone knows the answer to this question? So we're foregoing vehicles that we bought, we're going to buy. Have we ordered these? Are they?
No, I did not.
We're not on the hook for?
No dealership will give me a commitment as far as when I get one or even getting the price off of them. So it's basically, for this year, I canceled them, and I'll have to come back another year.
So then the other question is, stone gravel and concrete on those two, has the price increased on that that we have to?
The new bid price would have came in, and it wasn't increased. To what amount, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, I don't, I mean.
No, but everything is, you know, stone, gravel, concrete.
Piping.
Gas, I mean.
Well, I'm sure.
And the, and the stone gravel concrete gets used in projects that they do, whether they're working on sewers and drains, dig up, replace a manhole, whatever, they have to have the stone, you know, all that kind of stuff. So we're running through these lines, they keep coming up and saying, we're running short in this line and this line, so we're just trying to get it in there so we can get through the year.
Yeah, I understand that, I just, yeah. Yeah, other than that, I don't.
You know, it's not an additional appropriation, it's just moving it from something that we can't get to something we can get, and it's not moving at all because the, the new vehicles and streets was about $200,000. We're, it's not going to get spent, we're just moving 50,000 of it to help the other lines out.
So, yeah, can I get a motion for these transfers?
I'll make a motion to ask for legislation and declare emergency for these transfers.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This was just what was in.
All right. We have to beat past that as an emergency, and open projects, anything on open projects? I'll have to get a list, you guys, I worked on that a little bit, okay. Public participation, any public participation for Finance?
Mr. Wireball.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Gurner, would this be the time that we want to talk about the splash pad in Finance?
It is in Finance, I believe.
Yeah.
Finance or public lands, I guess.
Okay. Mr. Dillon, from McKeever's, we want to talk about how we were going to go out to get the bids for the splash pad, and I think Dillon would like to go over a couple different options of how to go about.
All right, take your way, Dillon.
All right, so originally, the original legislation for the splash pad approved us to go out to bid for the entire project, not to exceed $275,000. We would like to divide that project up to better suit the contractors that would be working on it. We have some utility improvements that are needed. First, some water line replacement that needs to be enlarged to service the splash pad, and some small grading activities that the splash pad contractors don't prefer to do, and so we would like to split it up into two separate projects, not to exceed the $275,000. We would go out to bid for the utility improvements, and then we would go through a request for proposal process, bidding type process, for the splash pad itself, where we give them a set budget for the splash pad and some criteria that we judge them based on, and we get proposals from everybody and decide who's going to do the splash pad based on that. So that's the primary gist of the change.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I guess, I didn't realize we'd have to, well, I guess typically you would get a contractor and he would just sub out the part he didn't want to do, but...
Yes, and that would normally, that would normally work fine, but the, the splash pad contractors specifically exclude those items, so we're in an attempt to get the city the best splash pad that we can get. We would rather not pay the second markup as they pass that subcontractor cost through. Because of the utility improvements that are needed out at Allmiller, we've had to shrink the pad slightly from what we were originally thinking, and we'd rather not have to do that anymore.
Okay, so my only question is, and I will make this for the long record, do we?
Do we have to have new legislation for that? If they're going to?
I would ask that we have authorized the Service Director to go out to bid for both sets of the, two separate projects, both sets of that, the one for the.
For the utility improvements.
The utility improvements, and then the one for the splash pad, not to exceed $190,000.
Yes. So, yeah, if you have the, what was it, $190,000 for the pad?
Yeah.
And, there goes my math, I went to public school, so, and the rest for?
So the, so the entire project is 275?
It's still 275, so, yeah, so, yeah, I don't have any issue with that, I guess. You're not spending anymore.
So the utility project, you would say not to exceed $85,000?
Yeah, and I don't anticipate it. So we took the entire project, budget is 275, so we have the splash pad portion at 190. The utility improvements are going to be probably just under 50,000, and then we have some permit costs and the engineering fees and some contingency in there as well.
You have contingency in the splash pad itself also, or do we have 10% on that?
We have 10% on the utility improvements portion of it, and then since the splash pad has a set price and we're getting an item for that, I didn't think that the contingency was as important for that.
That's just a question.
Okay, so I guess I need a motion for two pieces of legislation, one for the splash pad, one for the utility part of the splash pad.
Jeff, is this needed to be post haste, or do we, are we doing this?
We would prefer for it to be because we are, we are ready to send the utility part out to bid currently.
So, yeah, we'll have to because we don't want to drag our feet on this. Plus, I think the, some of the funding is, we have to use it up for, what, is it 23 or 24?
26.
26, oh, wow, half of that's done. But we do want to get it done, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion for both pieces of legislation, one for the utilities and one for the splash pad as an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The money initially be used will be ARPA money, but.
ARPA, right.
The Wannas is, you remember.
Supposed to be reimbursed?
Yeah.
So when that money comes back, it is just going into the parks or what?
It'll go into, back into the ARPA funds.
Then you guys will have to decide.
What to do with the, and we have till 26, huh?
Yeah, I think it's the end of 2026, but maybe the auditor will confirm, I believe it is.
I thought that we had till 24 to appropriate it, and then 26 to use.
The line, yeah.
Yeah.
And we should be able to make it under that, if we don't get too long down here. So, so I guess we've got that all, take care of any public participation. If not, we will adjourn at 6:23.
Okay, it is Thursday, July 21st, 2022, 6:25 PM, and this is the Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting.
Calling Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting to order at 6:25 PM. Members present are Dan Wireball, Burton Potter, and myself, Acting Chair, Kevin Myers is absent. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes, well, wait, public participation, sorry. First on the agenda, public participation, do we have any public participation? Okay. Next, we have the approval of minutes from the July 7th meeting. I would be happy to get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
All right, so we have a first by Potter and a second by Wireball. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so the minutes for July 7th have been passed. Do we have anything else, open projects wise, that we need to talk about? Seeing none? Do we have any other public participation? No? Okay, so we're going to adjourn the Public Lands and Buildings at 6:26 PM.
It is July 21st, 2022, 6:28 PM, and this is the Plating Committee meeting.
Okay, I will call Plating to order at 6:28 PM. Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel, myself, Chair, Kevin Myers is absent. There's none. I will request a minute correction from June 23rd, 2022, and as you see, it is with these corrections for the public hearing. Do anybody have any suggestions or questions? Do I have a motion to amend these motions so that they're?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, we need the approval of the July 7th Committee meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Right.
Okay, if there is no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, any open projects? Megan, would you be able to update that and send each one of us a copy of that so that we can go through it and try to close out anything that we can close out, or try to progress on some of them that's been sitting there for a while? If there's nothing else from either the members here, any public participation? Okay, with that, I will, there's none, I will adjourn at 6:31 PM.
Okay, July 21st, 2022, 6:32 PM, and this is the Economic Development Committee.
I'd like to call Economic Development to order at 6:32 PM with members present, Chair, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. First and foremost, if there's any public participation, you can approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on to the requested minute corrections from June 23rd, 2022, regular Economic Development Committee meeting. Now, I've looked over these minutes as well, and the original minutes typed by our clerk here, the verbiage said. by our clerk here, the verbiage said, "Vermillion asked what the point of the annexation was if we are not going to follow the annexation rules." The correction reads, "What's the point of having a codified ordinance if we're not going to follow through with the ordinance rules?" I personally think that that's just a matter of preferred verbiage, um, so I would, I would prefer not to change those, but if you guys think otherwise, then by all means-
And the word "be."
Yeah, the word "be" was changed from, looks like it says "ne," so you probably just hit a "n" instead of "e."
It's a typo.
Yeah.
It's a typo, yeah.
I had, yeah, those ones I forgot, sure.
The point is there. I think that if somebody wants to micromanage the verbiage, then they should have applied for the position, so, moving on. All right, we'll go with the approval of minutes from the July 7th, 2022, Regular Economic Development Committee meeting. I will entertain a motion to-
I'll make a motion.
Got a first by Mrs. Share, Miss Share, and a second by, uh, Mr. Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Um, it logged me out here, but I think that-
Open projects.
Open projects, if there's any open projects that need to be discussed. Anybody? No?
I'll get you guys an updated list here. I'll, I'll update all of them.
I know we touched on the annexation stuff last time, and then at full council, we wrote the letter to the Law Director and the SSD and the Mayor, so if, if they wanna get the ball rolling on that, and maybe talk with me, I'd be happy to help out with that as well, so. Um, other than that, if there's any other public participation? All right, we'll adjourn Economic Development at 6:35 PM.
Okay, it is Thursday, July 21st, 2022, 6:36 PM, and this is the Service Committee meeting.
I'd like to call the Service Committee meeting to order at 6:36. Members present, Steve Young, Miss Share, Brent Potter, and myself as Chair. Okay, we need public participation to start with. Seeing none, we'll go on to the approval of minutes from the July 7th regular meeting. And a motion to accept those.
Make a motion to accept July 7th.
Got a motion by Steve, and I need a second.
I'll second.
Brent, a second. Any more discussion on it? If not, vote, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're going to the solid waste increase. We have before us a letter that is signed by the Mayor Service Director, Ann Joyce, on the dire need of the solid waste fund. Um, and reading here, I'm just gonna go over a little bit of it. It says that we have not had a rate, rate increase since 2004, and it was a small increase then. Um, the record, compare this record with electric, gas, cell phone, internet, cable TV. You can see we have excellent stewardship of the citizens. Money, factoring inflation in, equal, equalization shows a regular monthly garbage rate would be six, you know, $16 should be $24.88 in 2022, as compared to 2004. So, at this time, I'd like to, uh, ask Mr. Dunn if he has some comments on this. Uh, he's the superintendent at the Street Garage. You got anything you want to say on this, Jeff?
Well, I think Mayor Carter did, uh- It's just, uh, with the fuel prices, and the solid waste department is one of the departments that we need to keep because we use those employees in other departments to plow snow, sewers and drains, and the street department. So I would like to see the, we keep the solid waste department and still be able to use the other employees.
Jeff? Yeah, we definitely don't want to lose that. I mean, we don't want to lose that fund period, and so, uh, I think this increase is, is just a Band-Aid for right now to get us through the next couple of years or so. Um, do you have anything, Jeff, you want to say on it? Jeff Weiner or the Mayor?
Well, as you look through, I think you all got a copy of the detailed trial balance sheet, uh, for the solid waste, uh, of the management fund part of it, not the admin downstairs, because downstairs, out of billing, you're split four ways to pay, uh, the people that do all the billing downstairs. So, but if you look in, in just Jeff's part here, the main expense we have is the landfill, and that's budgeted 325,000, has continued to go up every year. Um, we don't have many other expenses in there, um, other than insurance, liability, comprehensive, the electric, that share out of that garage. I mean, there isn't many line items that we have any money in, in that whole fund. So it's not like we can cut somewhere else to help fund, uh, even the gas and oil and try to keep putting money away for a new garbage truck. So it makes it really tight.
Okay. Jeff Dunn, what is, are the shape of the garbage trucks right now?
Well, one's a 2021, which we received last year, uh, then there's a 2018, and a spare one is a 2015.
And the longevity, Jeff, is basically eight to 10 years?
Yeah, anywhere from seven to 10, yeah. Probably looking at the next truck in 2024, possibly 25.
Okay.
And just so you know that, we take the old, uh, the chassis still good, we make dump trucks out of them for the other departments.
Okay, does anybody up here have anything you want to ask them?
Can we get the specific rating increases again for everybody to hear?
It, the rate increase is gonna be $2 across the board for senior citizens and for regular. It, it goes-
Per month?
Yes, per month. It goes from $10 to $12 for retired people, and from $16 to $18 for, um, regular-
Family.
Family.
But we also take 50 cents back to the replacement fund-
Yes.
Out of that.
Yes.
You go back to a dollar?
What's that?
Well, it's, yeah, it would go from 50 to a dollar.
Yep. And the, uh, you know, there's been talk of, uh, the city wanting to go private and all this stuff, but there's, there's no, there's no talk among administration that I know of that wants to go privatize, so. So, we need to keep this, keep this fund going, and at this time, I would like to, uh, accept a motion to get this legislation and do an emergency on.
If this keeps our solid waste in our hands, I would make an emergency motion to, uh, go ahead and accept these increases.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Motion by Aaron, second by Steve. Any more discussion on that? Seeing none? Vote usual sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, open projects. Uh, anybody have anything on the open project list you want to discuss? From anybody? I've got it. I've gone over a few things on it that I think connects to the meeting. We will, we will talk about a couple of projects when it closes out. Okay, seeing none on that. Any more public participation on it?
Did you say that that was, was it-
As an emergency, yes.
As an emergency, yes. Seeing none, I'd like to adjourn meeting at 6:42. Okay?